Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 Clay County Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. A few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear one case. We will begin with the report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize the case. Prior to any discussion the board members may have, we will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address, and please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of Planning and Zoning Commission is to decide if the cases heard tonight are to be approved or denied. The decisions on cases heard tonight must be appealed within seven days of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to the Clay County Commission. The county commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on September 13th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in this room, although some cases will not go to the county commission. Please confirm with planning and zoning staff if your case will or will not go before the county commission. Could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance, please?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Randall Morris.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Mark Bakes.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
And Tom Decker.
Present.
Jerry Nolte is absent?
Yes, Jerry Nolte.
What?
I was just calling for his name, for the record, my apologies.
That's all right. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our August 6th, 2024 meeting as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Tom Decker.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Mark Bakes.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Standing.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Of state. Very well, the first case we were here tonight is case number 24-111-RZ/P. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, and actually, before the staff report, the applicant has a request of the commission.
May the applicant step forward and please present your name and address for the record.
Dirk Tally, 17270 Highway 169, Smithville, Missouri 64089. We'd like to go on record to request a continuance upon receiving the full staff report, given the staff's full denial, the road and bridge, full denial, and an outside agency, which I don't think Kip and I were on the same page, review. We discussed with our counsel, Patricia Jensen and Jim Bauer, throughout some frets, and there was no way that they could be prepared for tonight's meeting in that short of notice.
How long of a continuance are you requesting?
I don't know, in the next meeting would be...
First Tuesday in October.
I mean, that would be fine.
So, one month continuance is being requested? Okay. All right. Please take a seat.
Thank you.
For everyone that is here tonight, a proposal about withdrawn within 10 days of the agenda being presented. The board is going to have to approve with an affirmative vote of three-fourths of the members present, which would be four of the seven that are here tonight in order to allow the requested continuance.
And Chairman, just to be clear, it'd be five of the seven?
Five of the seven?
Yes.
Math was obviously not my strong suit. In consideration of such a motion to allow a continuance, may I see a show of hands of how many people in the audience are here tonight either to oppose or to support this One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and... This is for the board. We may refuse to continue the proposal and proceed with the hearing and take appropriate action. However, because it has been requested, I'm going to call for a motion. If one is presented and seconded, then we will have to take a vote. Do I have a motion regarding the continuance? Since I don't have a motion, we will continue. Can we have the report read in? Kip?
Yes, Chairman, we'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record. Okay, so, our case tonight is the Reserve Atillery Estates. So, I've got the property pulled up on the screen now, so let's talk about how the property is currently. The proposed parcel is outlined in, or highlighted in red. It's approximately 132 acres, unplatted, zoned agricultural, has access from WHB Road, and there were six lots that were previously, if I can talk, subdivided from the north side of this lot, and I'll show you those here in a second. So, let's talk about the proposal. It's a proposed additional 41 lots. They would be rezoned to RU-80. Most of the lots, I think all except for two, are right at three acres apiece. There are two that are a little bit larger than that off the southern cul-de-sac. The RU-80 zoning district is the county's current standard for lots that are 1.8 acres to less than five acres. The developer is proposing an entrance from WHB Road. He's also proposing streets with ditch profiles, no curb and gutter, and a septic system for each lot. Those last two items would require variances. One variance to not require the curb and guttered street, and then another variance to allow septic systems on lots that are less than five acres. Currently, the Land Development Code requires five acres for a septic system. These lots up here are the six lots I was referencing. Those were subdivided a few months ago. They're between six and eight acres, but they were part of this property. So, let's talk comprehensive plan and land development code. Now, this is a unique property because it sits where two tiers meet. So, it sits right where the natural resources and the urban services tier meet. It's just south of 92 Highway. The natural resources tier, and I'll show you a map here in a minute, is the tier that's around Smithville Lake. It does partially extend on the southern side of 92 Highway. And then the urban services tier is the tier that is typically around the cities. It extends from Kansas City and Liberty City Limits all the way about to 92 Highway. Now, this is also within the highway corridor tier because it's so close to 92 Highway. Basically, that is envisioned as a future commercial tier, not as relevant for this case. And technically, this parcel sits within the urban services transition sub-tier. That's what we call the area between the natural resources tier and the urban services tier. So, hopefully, it'll make more sense when I show you this map. So, that is the subject parcel there. This area here along 92 Highway is the highway corridor tier, and then this area that goes down in here, all of this shading, basically right there, this, that's really bad drawing, this way, is the urban services transition sub-tier. And then everything this way of that line is the urban services tier. So, you can see there's just a little edge that's in the urban services tier. The rest is in that transition tier, and then the natural resources tier is to the north and west. Now, that's just a bunch of fancy terms for, we want to look at both of those tiers when we review a proposal in an area like this. So, let me see if I can erase. We're going to talk more about the comp plan here in a minute. We also look at the land development code, and we have the same five rezoning criteria with any rezoning case. These were part of your packet that was sent to you. Staff has concerns about those last four criteria. We have concerns that the proposal isn't consistent with the comp plan or Section 151-1.7, isn't compatible with the existing uses of nearby zoning of nearby property. We have concerns that the county cannot provide adequate public services at this time, mainly the maintenance to maintain the additional roads. You know, Terry may want to speak more on this later as you have discussion, but the road and bridge department has a five-year maintenance plan where they're trying to catch up and take care of deferred maintenance. Planning and zoning staff has been very clear and upfront with developers that have proposed subdivision with interior streets that we believe projects like that need to wait until the county is able to basically get a better handle on the existing roads, and then we could consider additional infrastructure that the county would have to maintain. And then, you'll see, we'll talk about the Clay County Public Health Center. They express concerns on the existence of adding possible 41 septic systems on the subject parcel. So, let's talk about comp plan just a little bit more. So, this is a table that comes out of the current comp plan, and you all know that we are currently in a revision of the comp plan that is not finalized yet, so we're looking at the current comp plan. And this basically, this table breaks it down by tier and tells us what kind of uses are allowed in each tier. So, I want to look at the natural resources tier first. I know it's hard to read, but it lists the residential uses as one dwelling unit per 20 acres. Now, there's an exception to that because that's a rule for every tier. In the natural resources tier and the rural low-density tier, you're allowed to do five-plus acres with an agricultural land preservation. You guys see those cases on a month-in, month-out basis. In the urban services tier, it's a 10-acre area or a full-on development, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. Now, I do want to point out, if you look at, if I can change it here, you look at this bottom box, and I'm sure you can't read it up there, but it does list non-agricultural zoning as allowed zoning in the natural resources tier, but it specifically says not including residential low-density such as on three-acre lots, which is what most of this proposal is. Now, with the urban services tier, this is where, this is the tier that is meant for development. It allows up to four units per acre. However, the current comp plan says that development should be on municipal-level services. In the past, that has meant there's a centralized sewer system, along with getting approvals from all the other utility companies. And again, I want to point out, even in this tier, by the current comprehensive plan, it says residential zoning is a allowed zoning in this tier, but it says not including residential low-density such as three-acre lots. Now, we have recommended developers to wait on projects like this if they have interior streets until the new updated comprehensive plan is approved because staff has concerns about approving something like this and it not being consistent with the new comprehensive plan. The final plan is going to go out for public review starting this month. From the initial mapping and that plan, this area would be a five-plus acre lot area, which would align with the current LDC and the five-acre minimum to have septic systems. But again, this is the current plan that you have on the screen. The updated plan has not yet been adopted. So, this is, I referenced Section 151-1.7 earlier. This ties back to the rezoning criteria. Staff has concerns, it's basically the same concerns with the rezoning criteria. Again, it goes to the concern on the septic systems. Can the county maintain the additional infrastructure? And is this timely and orderly development of Clay County? It's staff's opinion that there is an area of the county where three-acre lots with interior streets should take place. I believe that's going to be included in the updated comprehensive plan, but staff believes it should be more either in city limits or areas that are adjacent, that could be annexed by city with city approval, or areas right outside city annexation areas where you transition from the city density to the more rural 10, 20-plus acre lots in unincorporated Clay County. So, we think there is room for this type of development. We just don't think this is the right location. So, let's talk about the surrounding area. There's the subject parcel. You can see everything in kind of the light green is still zoned agricultural, so it's a mix of residential in the yellow and orange. Those are lots anywhere from two acres to five acres to large lot agricultural in this area. Here's a zoomed-out look at it, and the reason I want to show you this, this is the subject property right there. This is the closest city limits, oops, right there, that's city of Smithville, and that is just a hair over two miles from city limits of Smithville. If this property was in, within a mile of Smithville, they would have basically exemption power. They could grant other-sized lots that the county comp plan doesn't allow. We did reach out to the city of Smithville and Kearney for this, but they did not provide any comments. So, we did receive opposition leading up to tonight's meeting. We went through our public notice requirements, and then we received comments from several agencies. MoDOT did not submit any comments. The road and bridge department has recommended denial. However, they did give us conditions that we included in the conditions. If the Planning and Zoning Commission votes to approve, we're going to recommend that you approve with those conditions. The health department, in their comments, highly recommends a central sewer system for this project. However, if it is approved, they would require a morphology for a primary location and a backup location for a septic system on each lot, and this proposal would also need approval from Missouri Department of Natural Resources. The water district is requiring a hydraulic study, and the fire district is requiring hydrants, and we will review the construction plans if this is approved. Again, staff is recommending denial because we believe it's not consistent with the comp plan nor compliant with the LDC, and we don't believe the rezoning criteria have been fully addressed, and that was mentioned in the staff plan, or staff report as well. I am happy to answer any questions the board members may have. The applicant is present and has a presentation to present, and I believe there may be some adjacent property owners that want to speak as well.
I have a question for you. What are the current requirements for septic systems on a three-acre? Would this be an open lagoon? Would this be a septic system? Would this be a positive drip system?
So, that would be managed by the health department and MDNR. Planning and zoning does not have requirements, I believe, and Mr. Tally may be able to speak to this better than I am. I don't think he, and I don't want to misspeak, but I think he may not be allowing the lagoon type, but that would be out of my, out of planning and zoning's control and up to MDNR and Clay County Health standards.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for staff?
How big is the water lines that are close to there?
I don't even have that information yet.
I can't hear you. You're going to have to speak up. I can't hear you.
There is, there's a water tower there on 92, not too far away from it.
Just on the north side of 92 somewhere, but that doesn't mean they've got a water line running by there.
Yeah, so as I stated, the water district's going to require a $5,000 deposit to do the study. That study would tell us what need, what water lines would need to be upgraded. Obviously, the developer would be responsible for those upgrades, and that would, if this project moves forward, that would be part of the construction plan review. We did not see the reason to expend those funds at this point until it's preliminarily approved.
And there are two variances that would also have to be reviewed and approved?
Yes, sir, thank you for asking, yes. We gave the applicant the option to go the border zoning adjustment or the Planning and Zoning Commission because both those steps have to be done. Mr. Tally chose to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission first, but yes, he would need a variance to allow septic systems on lots less than five acres and a variance to not require the curb and guttered streets.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant step forward and state your name and address again for the record?
Dirk Tally, 17270 Highway 169, Smithville, Missouri. I want to answer just a couple of the quick questions that I know that I can answer. Kip made a comment about annexing into the city. We're two miles away from the city. State code says that 15% of the property must be contiguous with city limits for us to be able to annex. It's far from being able to just simply annex into the city of Smithville, so that's why we're here. In regards to the septic, the three-acre is a minimum of state. I'm not going to stand and say that I'm a installer, but we know for a fact that in order to get permits, that each lot must have a minimum of two times the amount of space, which is typically, these systems are designed as drip systems, so we have to have a fail-proof on every single lot. So, not only one system, but a second system before a building permit is issued. The question on the water lines, it's an eight-inch water line along WHV and a 12-inch water line along 92, as Mr. Rotis indicated, there's a standpipe nearby, so we feel comfortable with that. I will be, again, Dirk Tally, owner, Show Me Real Estate. Got a couple gentlemen with me, John Bailey, Dan Hartman. They've kind of worked tirelessly with me on this project, in particular, over the last six months, but really up to two years with Dan. Atillery Estates, we included, the 47 lots is really includes the six lots that have already been zoned, so there's 41 on the interior. We believe that we've built these projects before. In further, further points here, we'll go through how our engineer has designed this, why this fits the area, and why this is actually consistent as opposed to what Kip has pointed as growth in the area. Kip, you want to go to page three? John, I'm going to let Mr. Bailey stand up and talk to this part of the...
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Bailey, 5600 Century Drive, Smithville, Missouri. I want to kind of start off by referring to the compass statement that was referred to several times here, and you know, as Dirk mentioned, we've worked, put in a lot of time on this, reviewing the comp plan, the 2040 comp plan, and also refreshing on the 2008 comprehensive plan. So, the compass statement of the 2040, Clay County is leader in county collaboration, communication, effectively working with its community members, businesses, and regional agencies to balance urban growth, natural resource preservation, and providing opportunities for new development while protecting its natural resources and rural character. The direction statement, which has five elements, land use, economy, mobility, environmental, and collaboration. And with that being said, kind of going into, as you see on the screen here, I'm going to read it off the page here, the three-acre estate lots. We've carefully chosen a plan for three-acre lots. We feel this direction is more beneficial than development of larger lots of five to seven, even 10 acres. There is increased tax revenue on the three-acre lots, consistent design with other neighboring developments, with the same road layout. There's less traffic, I'm sorry, with the less strain on public surfaces. The efficient design promotes easier maintenance and management, leading to long-term savings for the county. Responsible land use. With the responsible land use, if we were to offer 41 lots of five acres, it's going to be a significant larger amount of acreage that we're using up for residential homes. All right. So, offering the three-acre tracks, oftentimes, people, five or seven acres may be too much from being in the real estate market and getting feedback from potential buyers and prospects. Maybe they don't want to manage five or seven, but the three seems to be a really, really good spot. In the staff report on page four, it references the 2008 comp plan. The natural resources tier includes an urban services transition sub-tier that extends where urban development is influenced by the urban highway, yet remains in natural resource tier designation for purposes of enhanced environmental review and scrutiny. Review and scrutiny is always to be expected in something like this, right? But it must be done in a legal, professional, and ethical way with all the parties and entities involved, from Missouri Department of Natural Resources, Clay County Health Department, and our planning and zoning. This proposed development has lots that are made up of three acres, which we've been discussing. The minimum acreage that the state allows us for septic is three acres. The additional space required for a septic system, 9,360 square feet, is the approximate size of... size of an area to support a four-bedroom home of the type that we would expect in this neighborhood. So Dirk mentioned that you need two areas of this size to support a four-bedroom home, right? You add up those two fields, you get roughly 18,000 square feet. It's less than .43 of an acre, less than half of an acre on a three-acre lot. We feel that there's a lot of opportunity out there in that, in that good soil. We feel like there's a good opportunity for Missouri Department of Natural Resources and the Clay County Health Department to determine if that septic system is suitable Being in real estate that we are, I do want to add in here that over the last two years, the two-acre to 3.9-acre tracks of land, on average, cost $154,950. In that same time period, four-to-seven acre tracks of land were $100,000 more expensive at $256,929. We understand that land, three acres in this area, can be very expensive. We also know that Clay County needs to grow. The comprehensive plan outlines that Clay County needs to grow. We're talking about the tech that is coming to the Smithville area. If we don't provide this type of housing, our fear is that we're going to fall behind on the folks that work in Clay County. They're not going to live in Clay County and spend their tax dollars in Clay County, right? They may go out to Johnson County or Clack County where there is more opportunity for housing that we envision on going on these lots. The 2040 compass statement, as it was provided to us or accessed through the Clay County website, rural residential area is what the map indicated this particular area. Internal street works, street networks typically do not have curbs and gutters, and the residences are typically serviced by rural water or a Missouri Department of Natural Resources-approved potable water source for water and septic systems for sanitation. That was out of the 2040 compass plan. So we have referenced several things out of that and also the Act of 2008 Comprehensive Plan. And the, one more thing about the 2040 plan is that the five-acre lots are recommended is what it, is what it states in there. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dirk.
Let's kind of step through, Kip. Okay, the right arrow, okay. Let's step through because we actually did spend probably more than Terry, amount of Terry's time than she cared to, but we were in all earnest, compassionate about this So we had, to my knowledge, at least three in-person meetings to go through what our proposal would look like, how it might affect the road systems, because that's what we kept hearing, is we kept hearing, Dirk, we don't want to see interior streets. We can't handle them. So we said, you know, what can we do to help? So we sat down and we kind of see, this is, this is literally a list that Roden Bridge and ourselves collectively came up with. And we can go through them. You know, they requested all the driveways, any of the drainage tubes, Dirk, no more than a minimum of 15 inches. After completion of this project, we've agreed to do a two-inch asphalt overlay along our entire property line. The contractor that we likely will use will come in and actually do some cutting on the edges, will clean up, as I think somebody has mentioned, that WHV needs, needs some work. So we've addressed that. They've asked for a double turn lane. They've apparently had a lot of problems with right-of-way regulations in subdivisions similar to this. In other words, people planting trees, putting items in, you know, whatever, fixtures in the way to where, you know, it causes them trouble while they're trying to maintain. And so we're going to ensure through the covenants and restrictions and HOA that, you know, nothing, none of the monument signs, none of the structures, none of that exists in the roadway or the right-of-way. We will follow APWA standards, wish Carl's here because he could speak highly to it. He knows exactly how we build the road. It's just that we will be deleting the curb and gutter sidewalks. And actually, he applauded this system, our design. If you look at it, I've got later in this report how the engineer that by concentrating that flow through the use of sidewalks, curb and gutter, storm sewer, we actually provide a more palatable, let's call it green subdivision, because we diffuse that water way before it's actually concentrated. Snow removal and, and as well as maintenance, and this goes all the way from maintenance of the signage, right-of-way repair. If somebody damages the streets, it would be normal for us to maintain it for two years. We've agreed to take it on for three years. Snow barriers, they've mentioned that they had a lot of trouble with snow drifting across WHV. We've agreed to plant a mix of evergreen deciduous trees all the way down WHV, not only combating the drift, but I think that helps enhance what our subdivision looks like. We had a request actually from a neighbor that I think is here, that he didn't like where the entrance came out, so we went back to the engineer, we redesigned it, moved the entrance to the south. At the end of the day, we're, you know, we're here actually to collaborate. And I know that's not often how government and developers are depicted, but I think it ought to be stated more that sometimes we actually do work collectively. So we are here to work collectively. I'm going to skip through a few of these. We talk about a lot of the tax revenues. To be honest with you guys, this, this, the tax revenue side is really aimed more at the commissioners' side. I think that at the end of the day, what I'd maybe like to point out here today is that, you know, through the, through keeping tax dollars that we've estimated that we can generate through a subdivision like this, in a 15-year period of time, we're going to generate $862,000. That is not personal property tax. That is sales tax. That's more than enough to maintain the property, in our opinion. Proven success. So we've recently completed a subdivision in Smithville that is basically mirroring this one, the bluffs of Whiskey Ridge, and the same engineer designed it, a lot of the same contractors, which by the way are Clay County contractors, residents, and taxpayers. Those will be who develop, likely develop this subdivision. I live here. I don't live in Johnson County. I don't live out of state. I drive by this. As a matter of fact, I live in my last subdivision, so I'm not afraid of what we're voting out. If I was afraid of it, I wouldn't be living in the one that I built. Going back to June of 2023, this actually started in early spring with Kip. And this was a 154-lot plan that met your current standards. It would ultimately have had a central sewage treatment. This was back in maybe Zoom days when everybody was doing Zoom meetings, so I don't think that was as constructive. But anyway, our talks broke down very, very quickly, and it was very apparent that this subdivision was meant to go nowhere. And so go back, redraw, redesign, and bring to us something that is much less dense in development. Flash forward to today. That's why we've brought this plan. We believe in it fervently. We believe in, if there are obstacles, we've listened to them. If there are more obstacles, we'll listen to those as well. This, I'm not going to, this was our engineer describing how he lays out these swales, how they construct these projects without curb and gutter. And there is a very specific way that they do it. Won't bore you with the detail, but believe me when I tell you that he, that he knows what he's designing, he knows what he's doing, and we've done it before and it's worked very well. Yeah, well, that's just a quick picture of our, our small family of companies. I'd like to point out before Dan gets up here and talks, I would like to point out that I don't believe that probably Kip did justice in pointing out that what is around us, the character of what around, is around us, a half a mile to our east is Cambridge Estates, approximately two, 25 lots of 2.9 to 3.5 acres. A half mile to the southeast is Sterling Meadows, 15 lots, 2.8 to 3.2. One mile to the west, Greenbrier Estates, 70 to 80 lots, 2.8 to 3.8 acre tracks. And then let's, let's stretch that out into a four-mile radius of similar projects. We've got Grand Hills, 50, 50 to 60 lots, Ballybrook, 50 to 60 lots, Wilmar, 70 to 80 lots, Clementine Hills, 35 to 40 lots. We're not dissimilar to what's around us. Maybe a couple farms around us are, but we are not dissimilar. And probably one last comment that I think should be asked. I know that there's been a directive for no new streets. Not sure that that's legal and legit. But one question I might have is a recent development that, to our knowledge, was brought forth here. They decided to go back to Smithville and develop this exact model that we're doing. I don't have the, the home count, but the north side, along the south side of 144th and along the west side of Mount Olivet, so all around this subdivision are streets that you guys get to maintain while tax dollars go to Smithville. I'm going to let Dan speak because I think he's got some, he's really dives into the numbers a lot harder than I am, kind of the passionate guy in the group. Other questions at this point?
Not at this point. Okay. Not until you're done with your presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chairman. Yes, Dan Hartman. My address is 408 East Meadow Street, Smithville, Missouri. Tonight I wanted to share with you as a commissioner's, a little bit of stats from the Kansas City Home Builders Association. As you know, we've struggled to have, to build houses to keep up with the population. And as of today, I was able to poll some data that I think is important as you consider this request. So in 2021, the new median home sales price in the KC metro area, so I'm talking Kansas City metro area, was $406,503, which required a household income of $103,323. In 2021, there were 872,579 households in the metro, and 70%, of them were under the income qualification threshold. In 2023, the median new home sales price is $503,270, which requires a household income of $160,687. Today, there are 924,000 households and that 77% of them are under the income qualification. With the combination of continuing raising construction costs, interest rates, land costs, we are, we are down over the last 15 years in the metro of 24,000 homes, meaning or 24,000 units short of what we would have needed to build. This is a opportunity, we believe, to provide housing. This, there isn't one solution, as you know, to reduce the gap of homes that are out there that are needed for people, but we believe the solution is this, one of, this 41 homes in this subdivision. One of the things I want to leave you with from the Knights Association of Realtors is the impact, total economic impact when homes are built is around $83,800 to the community. This is income obviously generated from the real estate industries, expenditures for home purchase, kind of a multiplier of housing-related expenditures, but the most of that impact comes from new home construction of $42,090, which is almost 50% of that impact. That's added to the economy. So obviously, the aggregate over a period of time, you wouldn't build all 41 homes at once, but this economic impact is, is something that I just wanted you to be aware of, and I think we need to consider that in. So I didn't know if you had any questions specific to the stats that I shared, but I just wanted to make sure that you had heard those, so thank you.
Thank you. Dirk, would you like to step forward again? It appears you understand the staff's report very well. Do you have any questions for staff or of the board?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do you have any questions for staff or of the board?
Um, yeah, I actually, I don't understand, Kip, why, we had notes and I don't have that email, but our engineer prepared a document that explained we would be going through MDNR for any of the septic and that I did not need to contact Clay County Health. Obviously, Clay County Health has made a comment. So somebody took it to Clay County Health for comment, and usually the developer does that.
Would you like me to answer that?
Would you please?
So with any case on any kind of septic system, we would take it to the Clay County Public Health Center as standard procedure. And my understanding, and we can reach back out to them and get more information if you like, but my understanding is they need dual approval. They need the Health Department approval and MDNR approval.
And that's been standard from what I have seen that every case is presented to.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other questions?
So I'd open it up for any questions.
Does anybody on the board have a question?
I've got a couple of questions about the septic requirements. You said it was going to be about 18,000 square feet per lot. What type of septic system are you assuming for that square footage?
Right. Thank you for asking that. And I wish our gentleman that designs and builds most of all of our systems was here to speak to it, but I think I can speak on his behalf. All of the systems, those of you who know Clay County, we've got a, we've got the name for the soils for a certain reason, a lot of clay content. So a lot of times the option is either to put in the open air ponds or move to an engineered system. Almost all of our systems were engineered for Whiskey Ridge. The highest, the, the example... The highest, the example that we gave you. Is the highest, the load rate for a four bedroom home and the soil types. And a gravity system, which would be the highest. Square footage of laterals required would be 9360 square feet. And again, he cannot, our builders cannot get permits. Unless there is two times that amount available space. On each lot. We're comfortable that we're providing that. If there is a question on. One of the lots that we have perhaps overlooked. Then I don't want to, you know, we'll correct that. We don't want to design. Something that we can't confidently go to the public and sell.
But you're assuming then a gravity feed system is going to work on these lots. I'm asking because. When I built a home, it did not work and we had to use a different type system, which was a much larger square footage. Than 9300 square feet. So I'm just curious.
How many square feet, sir?
Well, it's much larger than 9300 square feet. It's closer to about, my septic system covers about half an acre for a three bedroom home.
Okay, I don't know what, who you had design it. I can only speak to what we designed. In Whiskey Ridge, which was. Very recently. The last home would have been completed about three years ago.
I'm just questioning because, you know, a gravity feed system might require less square footage than perhaps one that's high pressure. Emitters, et cetera. And so you're assuming one sort of system. And what will you do with lots that don't perk? Because you have to have all the lots, a morphology test on all the lots. What do you plan to do if a certain number of those lots, in fact, don't perk for the septic?
We would do the same thing that any other subdivision that is designed and being built. This way, there's, again, the example is the one that is. That just got annexed away from you guys. There are three acre lots in there. They will design. Low pressure, a lot of times it's low pressure pipe systems. They're expensive systems. So. We're not trying to hide. The fact that these are very expensive systems. But we've also attracted. In our opinion. Some of the best builders out of. Kansas City, which by the way, I am not a home builder. But we've attracted. Don Julian's group, we've attracted numerous builders and they've, every single. Lot in Whiskey Ridge was built on. Its septic system had to be approved through Clay County Health. Designed and engineered with a fail proof. System behind it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. You can have a seat.
And Chairman, do you mind if I had just add one thing that might help with that last question?
Yes.
If, so if this gets approved, one of the conditions is that. They do the morphologies for each lot, which would be the location of the backup location. So if a lot would come back and you can't get a septic on it. They would either have to do a specialized system, or at that point we would change the plat and they would have to combine that lot with the lot next door to eliminate that lot. So just, I think that would be worst case scenario.
Is that your understanding as well?
That, yes, that is, that is very well our understanding. Thank you, Kip.
All right. If no other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? We'll let Kip finish up here. Okay, don't have anyone. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Please state your name and address for the record.
Brett Johnson, 14725 WHB Road, Smithville, Missouri, 64089. Hopefully my memory serves me correctly here, because I'm going to comment on just a few different things here. And by the way, I am commenting on behalf of all of us right here. We all reside right there on WHB Road. We're all here tonight to speak our piece on this because this is directly impacting us, our properties and our livelihoods. A couple of things that I wanted to touch on that were discussed here just moments ago. So it seems that there's been a large point of emphasis put on tax dollars. I find it hard to believe that tax dollars should be the driving. The driving force behind forcing a subdivision in an area that, quite frankly, according to the zoning, is not appropriate. So I think that we need to make sure and keep things. In the straight and narrow here and not focus on just generating tax revenue in an effort to. Coerce people into agreeing with what's happening here. What I'm going to be doing here is reading a write-up that we have. I believe everybody should probably have a copy of it. We sent this to Kip.
Yeah, Chairman, I forgot to mention that we did leave two things at your desk. One was the opposition letter that we received today. It's a two to three page letter. And the second item is. The pamphlet from the developer. Yes, so you got both those. The pamphlet was in the packet, but the letter was not. The letter will be attached as, we'll say Exhibit Z.
Thanks, Kip. This was written. Again, on behalf of all of us here that reside there on WHB Road. We are honestly, we don't relish being here tonight. We, I would personally rather be at home watching the Royals. This isn't necessarily how I enjoy spending my Tuesday nights, but. We feel very strongly about this and that's why we're here tonight. So we wanted to come and voice our opinion, point out the flaws that exist with this plan. And point out the simple fact that while Clay County is a rapidly growing area, no different than Platte County. The idea behind the comprehensive plan is to grow in a proper fashion. And the comprehensive plan, albeit is being revised, it's being updated, trying to stay up with the times. It doesn't seem appropriate to assume that forcing in a subdivision in an area that clearly. Isn't really meant to hold this quantity of homes in a small area. It doesn't seem like it's something that we should be proceeding with. That would fall in line with this comprehensive plan. I'm going to go ahead and read this write-up that me and my colleagues have drafted. So on behalf of all of us residents, we stand united to voice our serious concerns about the proposed major subdivision. Near Highway 92 and WHB. We value your time and to that end, we've consolidated our thoughts into this comprehensive report. I must stress that this isn't just a report, it's a plea to protect our homes and the way of life that we've all worked so hard to build. Our chief concern lies with the dire state of the infrastructure of WHB Road. While we understand that the county planning and zoning staff, including Kip. Have already informed the commission of these issues. I can personally attest the dire condition of the road. As someone who drives on it multiple times a day, I can say without hesitation that it is barely holding up. The road's narrow, rapidly deteriorating. Summer late traffic, farm implements, you name it. It's all coming up and down it and it's not equipped to handle an additional 100 plus vehicles. That this proposed subdivision would introduce daily. The road's not the only thing at risk. Utilities are stretched. We've already touched on the water issue. Septic issues that we would have at hand there. Just to give a little personal note, as we'll mention later in this. We actually, I've been before you before, I took two residential lots and merged them into one residential lot in an effort to put our home in the midst. We wanted to be able to plant our house in the middle of these two lots, so I've gone through this process before. Although it was a little more succinct and straightforward. Whenever we went to put in our septic system, it was a gravity fed system, as we were discussing earlier with Chairman Morris. And it was quite difficult to find a spot to put it. We've already touched on that, so I don't need to reiterate all the details of it, but I think that that is something that they would run into. Over and over again on this 41 parcel, 41 lot. Proposed subdivision where they would inevitably. Run into a catastrophe of trying to organize septic systems for 41 individual homes. Subdivision would overwhelm all of the utility services entirely. As stated in the staff report, the Clay County Public Water Supply District Number Nine is unable to verify if the water can even be supplied. To the development, while we understand that the developer doesn't want to incur the cost, the $5,000 fee to have an engineer come and examine the area. That's still a large contingency that we don't even know the result of at this point in time. The developers have made no plans to upgrade the necessary infrastructure such as curbs, gutters, main sewer line. Instead, as previously discussed, it's expected to rely on its own septic for every single lot. Which is an impractical and risky solution, given the well documented challenges with the soil quality in the area. The proposed three acre lots in the reserve at Tillery Estates fall well below the five acre threshold recommended for individual septic systems. Skip over this portion here because I pretty much already gave my spiel on my own personal. Situation with my land and having to install a septic system on it. Beyond the infrastructure concerns, it's essential to remember that the land is zoned for ag and for conservation. It is in the natural resources tier, as we've discussed. According to the natural resources tier, we're looking for 20 plus acres per lot. The area that has already been subdivided along 92, you didn't see us standing here in front of you because we didn't have really a whole lot to say about it. Those were seven acre lots. It's much more consistent with the area. These are not consistent with the area. And simply trying to throw in a bunch of lots to provide homes for a growing area. Is not the solution whenever it's an inappropriate location. Three acre, the three acre lots would erode the rural character and the natural beauty of the area. Frankly, that's what brought us to the area. I think that you would run a lot of people away from the area if you eroded that rural character. The drastic deviation is only a threat, is not only a threat to the environment and the local wildlife, but it also undermines the very values that the community holds dear. Surveys have been collected in preparation for the updated comprehensive plan. I personally looked through these results of the survey. And it's quite interesting to see hundreds and hundreds of people that have replied to these surveys and told us exactly what's most important to them. The message is clear. They don't want large scale developments in unincorporated areas like ours. They prefer new subdivisions to be located closer to the cities. Essentially in cities or on the edge of cities. Major highways, 92 is not a major highway. And in this case, seven miles away from the nearest town, smack dab in the middle between Carney and Smithville. 92 is a very dangerous highway with an alarming number of fatal crashes. Adding traffic to the subdivision would only amplify that danger. I would encourage all of you to go and examine the intersection there between WHB and 92. And pull out there whenever traffic is heavy at normal times of the day. It is quite challenging. When we chose to build our homes here, we didn't just choose a location, we chose a way of life. We were drawn to the rural charm, the expanse of open spaces and the promise of peace and tranquility. We were assured by the very landowners nearby that they shared our values and were committed to preserving the rural integrity of the area. Yet those assurances now seem hollow as they seek to divide the land and profit from it. We anticipate that this major development could lower our property values by 10% or more. The stark contrast between our homes and those proposed for the reserve at Tillery Estates is evident, particularly in the size of the lots. And of the quality of the building materials that would result from these spec homes more or less coming into being built. The rural character and charm that attracted us to this area would undoubtedly be diminished by a large scale development. If the county makes an exception for this development, what precedent does it set? What will stop future developers from transforming Clay County into something that we don't recognize today? County codes, future land use frameworks, community surveys, they all point in the opposite direction of this development. And if we choose to ignore the rules and frameworks we've established, what purpose do they actually serve? If the county does, excuse me, unfortunately, we do acknowledge that there are developments, as Dirk mentioned. Johnson Ridge, Greenbrier Estates. These have already been established and unfortunately, we have seen the repercussions of it. WHB Road is in horrible condition and we simply can't hold the additional traffic. Let alone the utility infrastructure that we have in place trying to keep up. The impact of these developments in our community has been significant and there's no doubt that they have greatly contributed to the traffic and infrastructure issues. Yet these develops, these developments feature larger lots. Even these developments feature larger lots and fewer homes than proposed. If these existing subdivisions have already strained our infrastructure, one can only imagine the damage. And even denser development would cause. We strongly urge the commission to reject this proposal. It's a poor fit for our already fragile infrastructure. It blatantly contradicts our zoning laws and it defies the clear wishes of our community per the surveys. Please don't let another major subdivision slip through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Does anybody on the board have questions? No.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak? That opposes? Please step forward. Please step to the podium, give your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Joanne Loston. I live at 15609 Salem Road in Excelsior Springs. That's a far way away from everyone, but I am Clay County Commissioner for the Eastern, Eastern Clay County Commissioner. At large, so I cover the entire county. One of the things that I get the most calls about, the most complaints about, as Terry will attest to, are roads. That's the hottest button that we've got. When I first saw this subdivision, there were the large lots, the seven acre lots that fronted onto 92. One of the things that I asked that evening was, now how soon are you, what are you going to do with the rest of it? They said, oh, way far in the future, long way away in the future. Several weeks later, I get this beautiful plat that shows the 41 acre lots. Three acres. And I go by WHB a lot because our son lives just past there a little ways, so we're over there a lot of times. It's a horrible access onto 92. And what I thought about at the time was 41 residences. At least two vehicles per residence. And if they've got kids, then of course they have to have their cars. Coming out onto 92 off of WHB. Whether the kids go to Carney, whether they go to Smithville. At that time of the morning, it's a busy access there along 92. I could see the danger of it. I realize growth is going to happen. We cannot stop it. There's just no way. These individuals that developed this, this is their livelihood. Now, the seven acres up front wasn't bad, except that I was shocked. That Missouri Highway allowed it, allowed every one of those six lots access onto 92. I would have thought it would have come down into WHB and then out, but there are access onto 92. So that's an additional, you know, additional besides the rest of it. I think that the growth that we see in Clay County, which I'm all for, you know, I've got to dispense the money. We've got to give roads and bridges. We've got to give to. We've got to give roads and bridges, we've got to give to the, the sheriff's office. We're always pulled a thousand different ways for money, not even talking about the, the people that come in that have charitable organizations that are asking for funds. You don't want to turn them down either. So, yeah, revenue is a big deal, but quality of life, I feel, takes precedence over that. And you move to the country, like this gentleman said, I moved out to the country 1979, because I wanted to have that calm, quiet life. And, yeah, they've moved in around me to some degree, but not like this. So, you know, if these were large lots like they initially gave, it wouldn't be as bad, and maybe these people wouldn't be as upset about it. But, but I think that we have to look at majority rules, and if we've got a number of, uh, people that live in the area that are unhappy about this, I think we have to take their feelings into account. The road, W H B is a lousy road, to be perfectly honest, and we try to maintain it as best we can. When you've got 80 cars coming out onto W H B, how long is that going to be maintained? Sure, the first two years, great. The builder is going to maintain it and take care of it, make it a very nice road, but after that, I've got to look long-term. They have to look long-term. You have to look long-term. What's going to happen then? And we're going to have to be maintaining it, and, you know, just like we do everything else, not, and, and inside the subdivision as well. So I think we have to think about that in addition. Doing things like, I think that they're trying to do a good partnership, putting the trees along the highway and, and the road and helping with the snow removal situation, yeah, but the snow doesn't always come from the same way. So, you know, one time your driveway is drifted from the west, one time it's drifted from the east, you, you can't predict those things. So, you know, there's still all of that road we have to maintain, and then we've got all these people there, so needless to say, they're all going to be screaming, "When are you going to get my road taken care of?" So I think we have to look at all of that, and, um, maybe it's political suicide to take a stand, but these, people put me into office for that very reason, to make the rough decisions, and, and I would ask you to give heavy consideration before you approve this subdivision. Whatever you do, I will always support you. You guys do all of this for nothing, and I appreciate it a great deal that you do, and I've never seen you make a bad decision. What you've done, you can tell you've given a lot of thought to. So God bless you. I will support whatever decision you make, and I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dirk, would you like to step back up and ask any questions, or address any concerns that the public has presented?
Um, no, I mean, if, are there any, now that you've heard some opposition to it, I guess, any questions that the board might have?
Does the board have a question or a comment or a concern?
Well, I'm going to give my opinion. I've been on this board for several years now, and I got sick and tired of watching these big farms chopped up into 300-foot wide tracks a quarter mile long, because you have to have road frontage. Because of the comp plan, nobody can economically feasible put a road through the center of a farm, and honestly, I see these people, 10 acres, 20 acres, they'll live on the front two or three, and the rest of it grows up. You know, at least a three-acre track, everybody can mow it with their zero turn and take care of it. You could utilize a farm instead of wasting one, like what happens in Clay County. Well, there's only so many acres in Clay County. And I entertain anybody's opinion up here on the board on that.
Anyone else have a comment? Do you have anything else?
No, I, I think to, um, not that everybody knows me, but our family does farm in the area, and, actually, I have my seventh generation riding in a combine tonight. So, to those, you know, opponents that, that, you know, talk about us, the passion of agriculture and so on and so forth, to David's point, Clay County's position right now is go take the frontage and chop it all off, and then leave this tract in the back that's, quite honestly, perhaps sometimes the poorest part of the farm. What, what we're doing is we're converting a farm to residential use. Not that anybody cares to hear this stump speech, but anybody involved in production agriculture knows that we're going through some tough times right now, uh, because we've overproduced, right? Farmers are now overproduced. We're such an odd bunch. So I believe that this is proper use. This is the highest and best use. We've acquiesced to the first proposition, which was 140 lots. We've compromised into something that we believe is still financially sustainable for us to develop. Also provides the lowest price of, point of the, let's call it the three-to-six-acre price tiers. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Chairman, I think you have one more opponent that didn't get a chance to talk.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I think you have one more opponent that didn't get a chance to talk.
Oh, we have somebody else? Please step forward. Sorry, I didn't see you back there.
My name's Jim Graham, 14720, W H B Road, Smithville. Uh, I moved out to this, my have some acreage. Actually, I bought it through Dirk, uh, and I moved out there eight years ago, cleaned up a house, cleaned up a shed. Now I have a great place to live. I would have probably the most land joining to Dirk's plan. Part of it is tree-lined, but there's a big part of it that's open. I understand that these lots and the, and the price of the homes is going to bring in well-heeled people, which I understand that. I don't understand how those well-heeled people would like it when I have corn in that field right next to it and doing my agriculture at that point. I've really am not, I don't want to go through the same things that Brett has talked about, all good points that we've already talked about. My main thing is, uh, the safety on the roads. Since I've been there, there's been four or five people just drive off the road, had to pull them out. Culverts, uh, it's a wonder someone hasn't got killed on some of them. I don't understand, to a degree, well, I'll preface that. I come from North Missouri, way North Missouri. Lived in the country, so far out that our dogs wouldn't even bark at the cars, because nobody come by. When I come to Clay County and decided, and I realized, because my family was all farmers, I wanted to have a farm again. Clay County has a lot of rules and regulations. Didn't understand it at the time, with planning and zoning and how all that worked, but I realized there were rules and regulations that I had to follow. I don't understand how some, when we have the rules and regulations to yet, we're not going to go by them. So, my biggest concern is my, what this is going to do to my lifestyle. I have horses, I farm. These lots are going to have people living in it, these lots are going to have kids in it, and believe me, I know from living out in the country, teenagers, young kids, when they get out there and there's not a lot to do, they go looking for adventure. And I pretty much assure, they're probably going to be looking on my land for adventure, because there's all kinds of hunting to do, and there's all kinds of things to do in the country that you can't do in a subdivision. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I don't want to be a policeman out there, uh, watching over my land all the time, but I feel like that could happen. And, uh, I did, I really want to just preserve the way my life is now, and that's living out on W H B, uh, watching the sun go down. I can look out my back porch and I see nothing, except maybe a deer or turkey, corn growing. And that's what I bought it for. I didn't buy it to have, uh, all kinds of people ride on my lot. So I urge you to understand where we're coming from, from my neighbors here, and what we're wanting to get accomplished here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Can I have a motion regarding the rezoning from agricultural district to residential urban rural single-family district?
Do you have to do the, uh, variances on that, or how?
No, so you'll, well, you have two cases. We have a rezoning and a preliminary plat. You do them just like normal. Uh, the, the variances are, will just be required if they pass this first step.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Do we have any other motions?
Maybe we cannot, the application to resign.
Do we have a second? Can I have a roll call vote and explanation of how the vote will work to deny?
Okay, so I heard a motion to deny, which was seconded, so a yes vote would be to support that motion, a no vote would be to not support the motion.
So a yes is to support the denial?
Yes.
And no is, everybody understand? Can I have a roll call vote?
Uh, Randall Morris?
Yes.
Mark Beggs?
Yes.
Tom Decker?
Abstain.
Mike Brinkley?
Yes.
David Rotis?
Yes.
Terry Griffin?
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a rezoning on this? I mean, a, uh?
There's a preliminary plat.
Plat?
Yes.
Do we have to enter the record?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have that entered into the record, please?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we don't have another report, we just need another vote.
Just need another vote?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Just, just a second vote.
So do I have a motion?
This is to deny the replat, right?
If that's the motion you want to make.
Yeah, I'll move to deny the replat.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote and an explanation of how the vote will work?
Yes, so the, uh, the motion is to deny the preliminary plat, it's been seconded. A yes vote would be to support that denial, a no vote would be not to support the denial. Are you ready for a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Randall Morris?
Yes.
Mark Beggs?
Yes.
Tom Decker?
Abstain.
Mike Brinkley?
Yes.
David Rotis?
Yes.
Terry Griffin?
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I believe that was the last case for the night. Do we have other?
Yes, so just so, before everybody leaves, the Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board. This is still planned on being forwarded to the county commission on September 19th at 6:00 PM in this room, uh, unless the applicant would decide not to move forward with the case. So still planned for that. Um, I would implore people to reach out to the Planning and Zoning Department before that meeting. Um, and then just a couple other comments. Case from last month was approved, and there, we do not have any applications that are not administrative cases for next month, so no meeting next month. And I will tell you, we are doing our best not to have a meeting in November, because it is election night, so we're hoping not to have a meeting in November, but we will be in contact with you as we get closer.
Anything from legal? We are adjourned.